Bringing the department board of select community to order. For third state, for twenty nine, twenty twenty one. Another month gone. I've been small business guys, but I have a.
I like that. I'd like to make a motion to the regular minutes of April fifteenth as amended.
Sure.
The main second, anybody's discussion?
They were written well, I just, I made a small few changes, but nothing. Didn't work out.
That's why I saw those. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, Bob, for the next time?
Sure, because the non-public minutes of April fifteenth is written.
I'll second those. Motion's been made second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Public comment for anybody? Okay, moving right ahead. We're gonna go on to town business, Mike, do you wanna do that health trust money?
Sure. I like that, yep. Then I can make a motion for RSA thirty one, colon ninety five dash B, paragraph, Roman numeral three, subparagraph B, to accept unanticipated revenue from, from health trust for the wellness coordinator of the, of the police department and town offices in the amount of fifty dollars each, a hundred dollars total.
Second.
Motion's been made second, all favor?
Aye.
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 On the discussion on that, Dave, I'd like to make a recommendation that goes back to the that unanticipated revenue that be expended in support of those people who attended that activity.
Okay.
Because they do things like promotional wellness type stuff, whether it be a gift card, whether it be anti-stress stuff, like rock-a-balls sometimes, right? So I like to make them, I like to make sure that gets dedicated to, if we get board consensus, that'd be great.
It's, but your discussion is fine, but the motion's gonna be.
The motion made is improved. No, this, this is, this is, now we have the money, but can the money be put towards the, those employees who participated in that?
Sort of amended the motion.
Well, or a new motion. Point of work. I hear ya.
I think it's a small enough amount of money that it can go through the, to the wellness people.
Yep.
If you use that. I'm gonna go out of order here, I think Linda, you're here for the mask mandate review. Why don't we do that and then we'll do the road hearings right after, if that's okay with you, Jeff?
Fine.
I'm gonna just do a quick review of the mask mandate here for the town offices. I spoke with both of the center offices here, the tax collector and the town clerk, to check and see when we might do another small change to our town offices here. And I think we've come up with kind of a compromise, we still wanna maintain our masks in the town offices, especially when you're under the six feet distance. And some of our employees that are over that distance use their offices without the mask, but that's fine. And we're gonna open up the town clerk and the, what do we wanna say there, the tax department on May fifteenth to the public so they can come in there during the regular business hours.
Without appointment?
Without appointment. So that'll be another step in our soft opening, you okay with that, Bob?
If you would agree with it, I don't have a problem.
Yeah. The other offices are already doing that at either end of the building, so I kinda wanna have the building all on one stage and I spoke with them earlier about it and as long as masks are worn in front of them, because they have kind of a narrow hallway in their section, they're good with that.
Fine.
Does that sound right, Linda?
Yep, there's some things I wanted to add to that.
Okay.
I did speak with select and all about modifying the plexiglass that's in my office and the tax collector felt the same way. Wondering if the town would purchase a rectangular piece that can be mounted across the entire window opening, because what we've got now is people stepping around the plexiglass so that they don't have to talk through it.
They wanna put pieces of plexiglass like we originally had wanted to on there, I don't have a problem with that.
We have COVID money.
Yep.
Okay, we would like to do that.
Yeah, I think via a COVID expense, I think that we, it's appropriate, it'd be an appropriate expenditure.
Uh, Leanne, why don't we contact that contractor used for small jobs and we'll get him to go ahead? And if he can make it a fairly thick one, just like your stands there now, not an eighth inch, but a quarter. I do.
You do?
To wash it and stuff and add it not to the shower.
Right, it'll, it'll.
You're talking a big sheet there now.
Do they make them with a little bit of a sound, something that you can talk through, like it's, you know what I'm, I know I've seen that.
I, I just know that they're gonna be very heavy if we get it to be too big, and I'm wondering if the two pieces together would be better.
No, I wanna be able to mount it on each side so it holds the whole thing. There's nothing in the center there to hold it, so. We're probably talking about two full sheets and then you rip the sheets down to like thirty inches tall or something. Cause it's almost seven feet wide. It's gonna be a little over three feet tall probably. So. But I can go over with you, Leanne.
Okay. Okay. The other thing I would like to do is even though we're gonna be opening, I would still like to encourage the public to continue to use the online registration and the mail to limit the number of people in the building. I'd also like to grab one of our stanchions, one of the old ones that we use for elections and put up a sign there to, to say no more than X number of patrons at a time. I think that's important to continue, it's not, it's just important to continue that so they're not lined up and then hanging out at Judy's counter, which then kind of imposes on, on her section of the world. I'm not gonna make any big announcements on the opening, just let it phase in. So I'll take down the appointment only notice on the website and just leave it at that.
Will you still be able to make appointments?
You can, and I, and I do have some that are booked out into the next few weeks. And those people will take precedence over a walk-in and I'll just have to say that as, as best I can, that they did take the time to make the appointment and as a courtesy, certainly would wanna honor that appointment.
Move it out to the fifteenth, cause she's got some for the first.
Right, cause I do have some.
And thereafter would it be only walk-in, or do appointments would still be available, or just, you're gonna go back to a regular business as walk-in type basis?
Yes, but I, once again, if this winds up that people are crowding in and not reading the signs that are posted as far as the distancing and stuff, we're gonna have to revisit it.
Linda, one thing, instead of saying wait outside, if there's nothing going on in this room, they could obviously come down here.
Oh, they certainly can, my, my big thing is, is it always bleeds over into Judy's section.
I think we need to put that sign at the door before you get to her counter, saying stop here, one person, enter at a time.
I mean, how do we get that stanchion, you know those real ugly red plasticies?
Just last week.
What is, out this week?
He's out.
He's back next Tuesday.
Okay, so we can do that. I wanted to. This is just the hot off the press from the state today. The newest state of the, the COVID thing.
Yeah, okay.
Heard the governor's happening.
Oh, I didn't get to hear it. This is from the library's homepage. The library is just now opening for the public to come in and it's by appointment. And it's limited to a certain number of people, I think Mary's being.
I saw Mary's standing.
Yeah, oh, did you see it?
Yeah.
She's really being very wise about how she's doing it.
And, and it's still being recommended with the masks and the distancing, you know, I mean, so they could limit having people, especially inside.
Yeah.
You know, but I mean, at least limit them coming in so that we have somebody that's going to that office.
What about the transfer station, we want the masks on or off, they're outside?
I think we gave them the ability that if they're outside, they could do it on their own accord and they've been doing that, so.
But we have to make announcement to when, when they wanna do it for the public.
Right.
Because right now, I know it's, I almost find it's almost absurd, because there's no one around me, I'm going to, we, you don't even do like one, two cars at one time and we're all within like fifteen feet apart, now all I'm doing is dumping cans and.
I go midweek and I'm the only person at the hopper, I don't wear my mask, cause the guy can't come over and help me, so.
Right, so.
The, the sign is down.
Okay, sign is down, okay, super.
I also wanted to point out that.
Soft opening.
Just to give you an idea, I know that you gentlemen have been getting phone calls and once again, I wanna reiterate, if you get a phone call, you need to refer them to me, because there's really nothing you can do but tell me about it.
I know, they don't, they don't understand that we don't have control over that department.
Yes, they need to, you know, they, they need, we need to educate them on how the government is set up.
We can educate them when we talk to them, but it doesn't make them happy.
I can't, I can't help that, but I, I just want you to see that I can have a day, this is one day's worth of registrations. Can you see this number of people in here? This was done online and through the mail. This is what the potential is for a crowd in here. You guys, when you come in, there's not always a whole bunch of people here, but there's always stuff to do. This was yesterday's, that's a pretty hefty stack of cars, and it's dog season. So this was mostly done, you know, I had some appointments yesterday, but this is a lot done online and through mail.
Heard so many complaints about the three dollars extra on a dog, I just couldn't believe it, but.
It's a dollar extra.
They're telling me three, why is everybody saying three dollars?
It's a dollar extra.
It's a dollar extra. Now, if they do it online, there are extra fees that we don't get, we get one dollar extra if they do it online, but.
I thought you said the guy that developed the program's getting a dollar in the state or something?
They get a cut too.
So it is three dollars more for them?
Then they can do it by mail and then it's a fifty-five cent stamp.
So it's not a dollar more, it is three.
But I, no, I, I just want you folks to know that I am gonna ask for your support on, you know, with the putting the sign up saying no more than a certain number of people in at a time.
Yeah, we agreed on that.
Okay, it's, it's really important, I don't wanna keep.
Like we said, it's not opening, but we wanna keep taking steps.
It is not fair to the public to keep changing.
Yep.
And, you know, this is gonna be, what did they say to kids, you have to be on your best behavior? I'm, I'm expecting the public to, to be respectful too of the fact that we are taking a step forward and maybe doing away with the appointments, but I also expect the public to take a step forward and honor the distancing and the mask wearing, because it's not over yet.
If it becomes an issue, obviously in two weeks when we meet again, bring it up to us, you know?
The thing is, on the website, I'd almost encourage that, the thing is, online registrations will continue indefinitely to.
That's a good idea.
Now, put that out there saying to save yourself the effort of coming and standing in line, use online resi-.
I've done that.
You know, you say you're, you're not gonna say anything about open to the public, but at the same token, you could use this as a great opportunity to tell the public.
Positive way, yeah.
As a positive way, you know? I am open to the public, but I would appreciate if people, you know, use the.
You don't have to do that immediately, but maybe at the end of the month, maybe.
You know when you saw that the governor said I'm doing away with the state mandate, the state mask mandate? And then, I don't know that you heard any of the sentences after that, so if I put a notice out, I am now open to the public, but all the public is gonna see is I am now open to the public. We're human, we see what we wanna see.
But I would just put out a message that online resi- , online registrations have become part of normal business, continue to do it if it's more convenient.
They have, I used to put special notices, I would do them on bright paper and clip them in there, save time, save gas, renew online. And people didn't do it, and by the way, you went, you stopped by yesterday, there was a lady that I was waiting on. And after you left, she says, I don't know what the problem is, I loved having the appointment, I don't have to think, Jesus, is it gonna be crowded when I get there? Am I gonna have to wait an hour? So there are people that like.
Still can't make it.
And one other thing, you know, you've all said you've gotten phone calls. There are about three thousand people in this town, if you each got five phone calls a week, it's, you're really getting calls from the people who are screaming the loudest. And please keep that in mind, you're hearing from a very, very small percentage of the town's population.
We are.
Okay. Done.
Okay. Moving on to Jeff.
I just wanna say, one, one, I'm sorry. Good work on the election.
Thank you, you guys too, we were out and it was still almost daylight.
It was daylight, we laughed, I like elections like that.
I do too.
Yeah, if only they called me like that.
And just something to think about, Brady's parting shot to me was, to all of us, she said, maybe we could consider having the town meeting on a different day from the day of the election, same week, but a different day.
We tried that years ago, Fred would be more than happy to spend an hour or two telling you about it.
Okay.
But we did switch it to Saturdays, were you here when we did that, Leanne? And what was the outcome?
Very good.
Nobody showed up.
I only say that because Brady has experience with two Saturdays from snowstorms.
It's, you know, it's a great idea, but people just.
I don't think people wanna come in this show day and I don't wanna come in this show day.
Don't shoot the messenger, I was just passing it on.
Maybe we could have the meeting in the morning and the election after.
Thank you, Linda.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Moving on to the next subject, we have a public hearing to discuss the road projects for twenty twenty one with the road agent Jeff Proggy. And Leanne, has it been noted for public meeting? It has, okay. So, I see we've got one member of the public here, at least for the road agents, we normally have one or two, so.
Yeah, we all, glad somebody showed up. Besides the usual gang.
We'll leave it open to you to give us your typical breakdown.
Start with Montalona.
Yeah, it's on the list, how's that? It's on the list. Oh, on the list, at some point in time. Well, start with our large project, it's gonna be a full reclamation of Ray Road from Clifford Farms to Route seventy seven. We're gonna grind up the asphalt, add some gravel, do a little drainage work and so forth, and repave that whole section.
This is our third year over there?
That's our third year over there.
We're gonna be done that road this year?
Yeah, we're gonna do it this year, last year we put it off and we're gonna use the COVID excuse for that, how's that? That seems to even, that's a wide brush, covers a lot of thick. Now that I heard that you've got forty thousand dollars of COVID money, could we use that for a COVID relief in that road or something?
No, you get the road to cough.
Okay.
You get the road to cough.
We'll take a step.
Nobody can apply for some of the money that's out there now.
Does heaving count?
I did, I did read both the COVID information, unfortunately, I didn't think the infrastructure of the roads was part of it.
I, yeah, I'm afraid you're right.
But it's coming, I think it's gonna be here.
Anyway, that's enough joking around about that, this COVID is pretty serious, so we shouldn't believe it.
We did get a couple of knocks on the door last year and I think Brian brought it up, Ryan Pike and also Dennis Bellageron and now Linda about following through with Montalona, is that, after that road is done, is that where we're heading?
Well, it kinda, let's finish talking about the road projects we're doing this year.
Okay.
So we don't get, we're kinda.
So Montalona's not even on that this year?
No, no, we're gonna go back there, but let's finish doing the, what the meeting's about and then we'll blossom off to part two.
Okay.
And the second area that we're gonna do extensive work is the Gorham Pond area. All the development roads that are currently paved in that complex, we are gonna put a top coat of asphalt on. Some places are gonna need some shimming and then we're gonna overlay the whole road. It's in pretty rough shape and we're starting to lose it, it's not gonna require reclaiming or anything like that, it's basically working with what we got. A little ditch work, drainage work, but.
Can you do all of them?
Yes, all at one time, it's the most practical way to do it, they're small, narrow roads, so the whole paving aspect is a bit of a challenge, but that's what we're shooting for this year, those two for large projects. And.
Very congested down there, we're, you're gonna have to have some good notification of the resident, to the residents.
Well, yeah, we'll all have to work together on it. I mean, some of the roads are dead end and maybe they'll have to just back in, pull up with the paper, but it's, it's the logistics of it will work out. I mean, and I don't think the people that live down there are gonna be unhappy to see us, I think they'll be pretty, for the most part. So that's our second undertaking. We have a, a bunch of areas out, all through the town, not necessarily road specific, that need to be addressed, some shimming, a little bit of paving repair, as always, ditching, shoulder work, the brush cutting, you know, the usual maintenance type things. And that's pretty, that's follows through on all the roads, not any one specific one. But that's just a general topic, but those two projects are our, our large projects. And that's gonna take the lion's share of the budget for sure, between the two of them. Uh, we did have some money left over last year that we encumbered, that we're putting toward the paving Gorham Pond road, that's why we're able to do a little more down there. Because of that, and to answer your, your next question, the Montalona road, well hopefully that was where we were, we touched upon it briefly about getting a bond and doing a more extensive paving project and we'd like to get that in the works and perhaps ask for one next year. We kinda had a consensus at our budget hearings that that would be the direction we'd wanna go and we expressed it at town meeting, so that would be included in that package.
That'll take some, some good legwork to get that all laid out.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't, I don't think it, it's not that big a deal to get it all lined out, it's where it gets voted in or not, so next time, whoever the people wanna spend the money, but I think we're at a juncture where we really should be taking a serious look at it.
Well, you know, we're putting the hundred thousand towards our additional road maintenance slash paving every year anyway, and I think that that bond may not be much different.
No, that's, that's what I was hoping, that we, our target number and everything would be somewhat close to that, so maybe we could just, instead of appropriating it the way we have been appropriating it for a specific paving per year, we could just say, we're gonna take that money, in lieu of that, we're gonna take it and apply it to the bond payment. So it should, hopefully it should, it would, in theory and on paper, it would equal out. The only thing is, as you all know, if you sign onto a bond, it's over a period of years. But you kinda get all that done, instant gratification, you get all the paving done.
Done early on and then you're just making the payments on it.
Yes.
You will go back to your regular budget at that point.
Yeah, regular operating budget to do small repairs and small, short, the building rooms.
Small roads, yeah.
Yeah, the, the overlaying would be targeted towards longer roads that go through at service an area, not necessarily a, a dead end road like Putney Road or something like that, that would be something we would, I would envision the town would undertake under the office.
What about unpaid roads, were there any work on those issues?
Well, the typical grading and all that, add some gravel, you know, usual stuff, but no, we don't.
I wanna commend your department on getting on those early, the spring, the people, I think really appreciated those and.
Man, they were, they were a challenge this year.
They were done early and.
Oh, they kinda, all of a sudden, we lost the muds, a couple of them got horribly muddy. But it was, everybody, every town had to.
If you were on them as fast as you could be, I think it was, it was good to see.
We tried to get out and put some stone and regrade and stuff.
I've seen some towns actually close schools because the buses couldn't get through the roads.
Always a challenge, but we, we didn't have to do that.
Leanne, comment out of the public?
Yeah, comment, yeah, I'm a proponent of, of the, uh, getting a bond. I always have been, because I think you're gonna get more bang for your buck anyways. And so, yes, you're gonna be paying every year that, whatever that is, hundred thousand, whatever it may be, but if you waited in the long run, it's gonna cost you more in five years and seven years, so to me, it makes more sense to do the bond and get the work done, makes sense.
Okay, we'll need you at town meeting then.
I talked to a few people about it, they seem fairly supportive at this point.
I think we keep our budget fairly even to what we're doing now, I don't see whether it'd be an issue.
You're spending it now.
Yeah, exactly.
I agree with what Lee said about the bond, but I had a question with, I didn't catch Biden's speech last night, is there any talk about infrastructure money?
There is, but it's gonna be for, not, not local town roads, I don't believe.
Maybe states.
Maybe some that trickle down this way that we get from our state, but, you know, we'll have to wait and see, we already do get a, a month from our state for that, so.
Usually that's geared to the larger interstate bridges and stuff.
State highways.
They kinda, like Dave said, trickle down theory, we get the benefit of it.
You know, if they do give the state money and the state allocates larger amounts to us, there are some different years, we've gotten different bridge money and whatnot.
It'd be interesting if they moved any of those projects up on the, like the turnaround at Page's Corner, that'd be nice.
It actually gives a release to the state to give money to the towns to use, because if the state picks up the interstate, or the US picks up the interstate, it's usually, the very least is they'll get eighty percent, but it's usually ninety percent, ninety percent, ten match for the state, you know? And it's just the fact that we have such a low gasoline tax, if you had more money in the coffers with the gasoline money, you'd have more money to play with and that would give them, you know, additional revenues that they could even help the towns and municipalities out with.
Leanne, there was a, I put it in the mailbox items, there was a letter of company that does bridges, small bridges in towns.
Oh, that's good.
I'll just give that to Jeff next time you see him.
We've done the only brick, well, we have two bridges and they're both in excellent shape.
Yeah.
Bella Brook is one bridge and the one we just replaced at Stockford.
In the Crestbury and Roebird?
Yeah, that's, that one's, that one's just been redrawn and we should have a live play on that. It'll be interesting reading, but I don't wanna visit any more bridges. No, actually, those are the only, legally, those are the only two crossings that are considered a bridge by the state.
Bella Brook, can see that one down on Grapevine?
Yeah, over the Bella Brook, that was replaced actually back in the eighties with a, a large diameter arched aluminum culvert and it's held up very well, it was coated with a coating or something, so it's protected it from the elements of the water. It appears to be fine, the state comes out and inspects it and give a clean bill of health.
Any interest in working Twist Hill?
Any work on Twist Hill? No more than the usual patching or?
Just patching.
Yeah, and retreat cutting and stuff, no, no, it's, it's a paving project or anything.
Just tr- to traverse it today and the thing is, it was, I thought Montalona was gold compared to Twist Hill.
Well, there's a couple of sections of Montalona that we shimmed up and repaired.
Yeah.
And then Morse road cutting across there, it's got some pretty nasty spots.
Yeah.
Now, when you get the twist, it's, overall, it's all bad, it's got some ups and downs and ups.
So there's more routine stuff.
Lucky for this year, but that would be one we would be looking at to do the overlay pavement, that would straighten a lot of it out, it's in good enough shape, so we want doing that.
Nate, I see you put your hand up.
No, I didn't put my hand up, but I wasn't thought about the shimming and overlay. I wanted to maybe question Jeff if he was, for lack of a better word, amicable about grinding instead of just shimming and overlaying. Grinding, shimming and overlaying, three-step process instead of two.
You do do that in some instances.
Well, yeah, the grinding, do you get in that, mixed up with the reclaiming, the actual grinding, all the asphalt up?
Well, I, I don't know if I'm, I'm mixing it up, is there two different, is there two different?
When they reclaim it, you come in and you like road it till the whole road.
And leave it.
And, no, you repave it afterwards, but.
But you leave the material there.
Yeah, you should leave the material there and a lot of times you add more to it. Unfortunately, like everything else, there's a level cost, everything. Uh, it costs, I'm gonna use this number just because it's a number that you can think about, grasp. If you, just the reclaiming and regrading aspect of a mile of road is twenty thousand dollars, it's done by so much a square foot. If you've gotta add some gravel, that's a variable. Then repave it, we'll put back four inches of asphalt, so you get the cost of four inches of asphalt versus if the roads worn it, you can shim them to level it up, fill in some of the ups and downs to get the shape of the road back and then overlay it, that significantly cuts down your amount of asphalt. Usually from the four and a half inches that we'll put back with a base and topco to an inch and a half or two maximum.
Okay.
So it really lowers your thing, if it was a perfect world and we had a gold mine out back, I'd say, yeah, we'll grind them all up and do them. But that's the Cadillac method, some roads are in such bad shape that you need to do that.
I was thinking specifically for Twist Hill, it doesn't seem like it's.
Well, actually, that's really not in that bad a shape compared to most of them, and it has some spots that, and then when you grind it, actually what you do with the grinding is you just do a surface grind and you take off maybe any high spo- spots before you pave it, that's the actual grinding application. And what that does, it takes out the hummixes or whatever, so when you put your pavement on, you have an even layer of pavement instead of like maybe a half inch there and two inches somewhere else.
Yeah, I understand that.
That's, that's just a terminology thing, the reclaiming is when you actually grind it all and do it. And, you know, I mean, yeah, we could do that, but we'd get, either have to double our bond or do half as much.
You're gonna come up with numbers with that bond anyways.
Yes.
Speaking of bond, could we get a, a plan on maybe by, maybe August, September, start talking about the bond, getting, getting privaloners on it?
Yeah. Next week? Oh, you're not gonna do it. No, yeah, that's, that next summer.
Gives you some time to work on it.
By the end of the summer, yeah?
Yeah.
That's fine.
Cause that way we'll, we'll go into the, why'd you say?
Yeah, no, that's fine. But I mean, that's, that's the deal, it's a, it's a bit of a trade-off.
Would the grinding and reclaiming extend the life of the road?
Would the grinding and reclaiming extend the life of the road?
Grinding and reclaiming?
Yeah, and then paving over that to.
Well, it typically it does, but I don't know if you. Follow the roads in Goffstown around, they have a pretty extensive road rebuilding plan. And they've done a lot of that, and some of their roads are going to be like ours are now, so it's kind of a.
Some of the roads hold up very good to some point apart within a few years, so.
Some places you have a bad spot on the road, you live with it. The only way to do it and have the longest life of the road, we'd have to excavate all that material that's in the road out of there. Put all good material in. Under drainage and all that, and that turns into that million dollar a mile thing.
Shake that.
So, this is kinda the. The grinding and overlaying is a good. Way of doing it, but it's still just a surface type application. So. I believe, and a lot of people believe, and it's kinda the industry's changing a little that way, that. The shimming is a good thing to do and the overlaying, if get, get its type of a maintenance type thing, you don't get the long life out of it. But you can't afford to do the full, full bulk thing.
Do you see the state do that a lot too?
Yeah, they, yeah, they do it, they have an aggressive overlaying program where they'll put an inch or so on. I don't know how many times they've paved Route thirteen out here since I've lived here, but. They keep coming by and do it, and that's to keep the good road surface, keep the cracks filled so the salt brine doesn't get in there. Cause that's another thing that really raises heck with the roads. Cause when you have all those cracks and the little divots where the water sits. When we put the salt on the road, it creates a brine. And it goes in those cracks and it just messes up the subgrade of the road, it makes it kinda funky and. It just, I honestly believe it adds to our towns in general is to our problems on the road. But unfortunately, public dictates that type of snowing a little more.
One more question.
Yeah.
Um, we, do we have any, uh, we have outstanding, um, uh, fees where, uh, not exa- not exaction fees, but.
Yes, exaction, yeah.
Bonds for?
Exaction fees, exaction fees outstanding that you gotta execute on this year?
Up on Guile Hill Road.
Okay, you're gonna be able to do that?
Yes.
Okay. We, again, it's, 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 uh, I don't wanna, it's, it's.
We don't wanna run out of the, over the date.
One runs out this year, one next year.
Yes, I, actually, I've talked to Donna about that, she looked it up for me the other day.
Yeah.
I think the, uh, Zion one is the first one to go.
So you're on top of that.
And then this Herrick is the next one, I believe there's gonna be a third one that somebody's gonna pay this year. Because I, I gave them a driveway permit, I believe they're gonna pull house bills.
And I, as I understand, um, that's gonna be set by the planning board, the exaction fee, whatever, whatever they deem necessary.
Well, those are already set for those.
This is a preset one, a pre-approved subdivision.
Okay.
Any new ones that get subdivided, the planning board will revisit and come up with a number.
I already asked this gentleman, because he's also on the planning board, so he's gonna, he's gonna subject matter expert here.
Yeah, that's, that's. Anything that comes before us now, that, an exaction fee is assessed to will be recalculated.
And Jeff, are you? On that long term, are you planning on paving any of the dirt roads?
The only dirt road that I really think that we should pave, and I think a lot of people would tell me I'm crazy and there's no sense in it. Is Purgatory Pond Road. And the reason that is because it was built. Up to class five road standards. A year ago, Brian Noel, it's got the foot and a half of gravel, the six inch of crushed ditch lines and everything else. By repaving that, we will protect the subgrade and it will last a long time. It wouldn't be a popular project, given that people live on a dirt road and they're always telling me, can we, why don't you pave our road? But this one has a good base that would save what's there. I'd be a proponent of it.
But you know, I think there's not that many dirt roads in town that, you know, if you started picking off one or two every. Five to ten years, you know, you could go a long way on your maintenance on those roads.
Could, but to back up to what you said about the dirt roads turning into a kind of a mud hole earlier in the year.
Yeah.
The ones that have the questionable base and we can't get rid of the water in it. That was done on Kibble Pond Road. And last year, we had to go back and. We actually repaved that because it was really starting to fall apart, it's not a bad idea, but I mean, it's, it's when you. Gotta balance, you only got so many dollars.
I was amazed how long that subgrade lasted on Kibble Pond, as you know, that was gone down haphazardly right, right over some rough material.
Yeah, just over the years, yeah, so I mean, it's.
Lasted longer than I thought.
Yes. But I mean, it's something to look at, but it's like, I feel personally, and I can be corrected about this. That we have so many already paved roads that are in dire need of attention, it's. Hard for me to put that asphalt on, you know, marginal dirt roads.
Right.
The only reason I mentioned Purgatory Pond Road is because that will last a long time down there, it'd be like a subdivision road.
Be like J Drive.
Yeah, any of the recently ones, Overlook or any of those that have been recently built, it's built to those kinds of standards.
Okay, anything from anybody else? Jeff, are you all set?
I am all set.
Okay, anything from the board for Jeff? Well, thank you for coming in, thanks for giving the update on it.
No problem.
You all set Nate, or do you have something?
Yeah, the, I was going to, uh, speak to Guile Hill in the exaction fee, but you guys, you guys answered it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the thing is, um, I, I already brought it up because, um, um, this, as a town, we've been remiss in staying on top of it. And because we've had, something just get put by, behind the power curve. And, uh, so we're gonna, we're paying attention to it this year, and very, and working as a team to pay attention to it.
That's right, the office has done a good job the last few weeks.
Okay. All right. Next item on the schedule here, uh, we're gonna be looking at. Like, I'm gonna sign these, you know that. You let me go through this whole step and I didn't answer the meeting. Public hearing is now closed, uh, seven thirty. Thank you for coming in Nate. Okay, next thing, um. I would like to talk about, uh, the recent attorney's fees we've had. Um, on the planning and zoning, um, more specifically. Their budgets, um. Got just about used up a hundred percent on just the last. Um, couple of items they had come up and were still in the early parts of the year. And then speaking with Lean about it and, uh, talking with Donna here. Um, I'd like to. I'd like to make it that the. Chair of the boards are the only ones to contact the town attorney without prior selectman's approval.
Could, could the chair designate someone to do it?
Um, I was hoping not to, Mike, and the reason why is cause. A lot of the other people other than the chairs might talk about general subject, which ended up costing a lot of money.
I know, just working with town attorneys, I know Bob and I worked on issues before with town attorney, especially like on your.
Yeah, well, that's a different scenario.
But when we talk about the town attorney though. The key thing to making it work, Bob and I, as a, as a team, we've worked together.
I'm not really talking about the select board here, I'm talking about other departments within the town.
We, the guidelines should be, they sit down and ask, determine what questions they wanna answer. In other words, we didn't call them up and say, hey, how's the weather and, hey, I think there's a little problem over here. We had specific questions to ask the lawyer, so the thing is, we're not wasting our time and his time, is the nickel stops, stops as soon as he picks up, he picks up the phone. And so, some guidelines should be put up, like, if you just don't call nilly-nilly, you gotta have a specific set of questions.
That's why unless it's the chair doing it, it's different departments. If it comes before us, then we can kinda give them the okay on it, cause. It's really good out of hand on those, uh, ones that just happened there. And we don't have the money in our budget to start running it from other areas.
The thing is, we gotta make sure NHMA is free.
That's right.
And the thing is, if they should use that as one of their first sources, if they don't like the answer or want a second opinion, then go for it.
Yeah.
And the other thing is. Not to be contrary to you, but, um, I don't wanna undermine the volunteers. I mean, a volunteer, these people, um.
We're not underbuying.
No, but undermine, I mean, I, I mean, I don't wanna be so micromanaging that we gotta prove everything at this level, but we give them, they have an estimated budget.
Well, that's why we give it to the chair.
Right.
And then if it goes outside of him, then it should come in front of the selectman, I think.
Okay, um, okay, I'm just a little leery, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna, uh, how can I put it? Disenfranchise our, our, uh, volunteers.
Well, to you that, you go to the voters and start asking for a lot more money, so we wanted to.
Well, the, the issue is here, they have a budget. The thing is, um.
Yeah, so they've used their budget up, so what do we do now?
Well, the thing is, they have no more legal questions, I guess.
Tough.
No.
So that's the, so what I'm trying to do is kinda control.
I understand, but the thing is, um.
And Lean and I have talked about this, and by going to the chairs. We're hoping that the questions will be very direct from the chair and all the other people can put the input into the chair.
Yeah.
So you have one person calling the attorney.
Okay.
Which it should be, I would think.
Well, or, the thing is, that's why if I had someone, if I was running the zoning board, and the thing is, I had one person who was actually leading up a project. And he was, I, I'm saying, let's assume on the chair. I'd be comfortable with him calling as long as he, I knew what he was asking and stuff like that.
In that case, the chair could come and say, hey, like this person, talk to him instead of you.
Right, but does, does the chair have to come to ask for permission to get someone else to talk, that's the question.
That's what we're trying to do, Mike, to control it.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, it's, sometimes I just feel we put too much of a control on it, I think. Uh, maybe a, a warning or just a, a letter, I mean, a letter of concern to, to chair saying, hey, listen, your, your budget is, uh, tight on this and you already expended that. Who's watching the hours you're spending? And, uh.
That's what we're trying to do.
Yeah. But the thing is, if they have them come to us, I think is, uh. Over management, just, just some fun, Bob, I'll open up to your ideas here.
Well. I can remember when the reason why we restricted who was calling the attorney was the fact that. The attorney was getting called an awful lot, so that's the only concern that comes up. At, at least if we have an overview every once in a while.
Yeah.
Of what is going before an attorney. Perhaps that makes it easier to justify, in other words, if, uh. If we're finding that some of those things can be answered differently.
Right. Well, that's why I think if it's focused through the chair, the chair is more responsible for. You know, everybody that's working kind of underneath them, whether it's on a board that they're all volunteers or not, it's.
Right, I mean, I understand that, I'm just saying, if we have an overview, so we have an understanding of what's going before an attorney, so that if there's a different way of resolving that. Maybe that can be pointed out before.
Right, and that's what I'm talking about, if they come to us, then we kinda have that overview, but right now, we don't.
Right.
And I've been on this for four years now and nobody's talked to us about attorneys at all. And now they've used their budget in the first quarter of their.
Yeah, and the fact that in the past, we've had very little legal action on both those committees, which has been, we're fortunate. And, uh, but I, no, I hate to go the rest of the year then coming to us to ask for more money, which we don't have to give.
So I would think if it was funded through the chairs, at least then they could come to us if they need to, you know, do something else and.
And that, and that's my point, having at, at least a little overview. Oversight of what, what is going on, you know?
Okay.
But I think the chairs need to at least put on notice, hey, you've already expended your budget, I mean, maybe they have, they, they don't have any, any idea that the budget is shot.
Well, it was brought to my attention, and so Lean brought it, and I, I wanted to bring it to the entire board, I didn't wanna make a decision myself about it, so I said, I'll bring it to this board.
Yeah, I, I don't mind a little oversight, but the thing is, I, I think, um, the chairs are selected from, as a vote on each show, and they're, they're responsible for that money.
So we'll go so that the chair is the only one to call, and if they need above and beyond that, they come to us for some oversight.
Okay.
Can I also include in a memo that their, their budget is depleted? Therefore, uh, the selectmen are.
You can put in there's ninety-eight percent of their budget, or ninety-six, or ninety-two, whatever it is.
That they need to use legal advice with caution. And be prepared with questions before either picking up the phone calls. Where if they had it written in a email format, it might be.
And if it's gonna go over their budget, the chair should come to the selectman.
Absolutely, absolutely, and the use of NHMA, I mean, that's free. And sometimes, you know, I, I don't always agree with them, but they, it's a starting point. Especially when they're vague in their questions.
May I just give some input on NHMA?
Linda, just, state your name just for the.
Linda Landry, town clerk. I did contact them sometime last year, I had a, a question, and I know it is cheaper to go to them than to even bother with legal counsel. And I, I'll have to see if I can find the response, and they, they answered me, but it was very vague and they pointed out that they don't represent me, they. They're there for the board of selectmen, so I'll look into that and find the response and give it back to you so that if. Planning or zoning or whatever does use NHMA. You know, just to prepare them that they might get this response.
Well, I do give them a list of people who are authorized on, they've asked me to re, review that list. On a regular basis, so for you to get that response.
I could have had a newbie, I don't know, but I'll, I'll see if I get.
So you were getting some pushback, in other words?
Pardon?
You were getting a little pushback?
I was getting a little pushback, and I was kinda surprised because I thought that they were there to answer our municipal questions.
Absolutely.
And I, I don't remember if it had to do with an election or. Yeah, I think it might have had to do with an election, but I'm not positive, so I, I will certainly try and find that.
I'll have to look to see what, uh, ask them for that, the list that they have on hand, and maybe you're not on the list, cause I don't know that. You usually use a state for your questions, so I'm not sure if you would even be on that list.
At times, I, at times the, uh, municipal associates, they might be.
Well, the, I think the one that you're talking about there, I can remember, uh. They gave us their opinion, but they also said we should check with our town attorney to make sure that.
They do that from town.
Yeah, I know they do that, but I, I kinda remember that specific part about I don't represent you, I represent the selectmen, so I'll, I'll see if.
The only, only value I see, then they can help narrow the focus of the question, and so when we go to our attorney, we're not wasting hours, uh, with the clock ticking on it. Thank you, Dave.
Okay.
Thank you, my dear, follow through.
Thank you.
Going on to the next, um, item here, uh, we've been asked by the building administrator to. Review the nineteen sixty-six sign ordinance. Uh, I haven't had time to read that, but Lean did email it to us. So she wants to make sure that we have some signage, may come up with some subdivisions. That were actually, um, we like what's in this ordinance, she's trying to make sure they're updated, so if we could read this over the next couple of weeks and we'll look at it at our. Our next meeting, if that sounds good to you guys.
Sure. And this is, Steve, I like to use NHMA here to look at our order, see if anything's changed as, as far as new state regulations.
So Donna was nice enough to work with me on this, I, I recommended that if we were gonna give this to the board, that we have other towns' examples. So she did provide us with four, four different local towns that are similar to Dunbarton, and that might be helpful to read theirs and then. You know, just dismiss it or, um, make some possible changes.
Don't bring this hard copy home?
That's yours, yeah, yeah.
And, but, NHMA have to look at ours to see what they would recommend.
Yes, do you wanna, you do it first and then make some. There are no changes and.
I, I'd like to start off with, what's wrong with our ordinance as it's written?
Okay. You want me to, so you want me to check on with NHMA and read our ordinance?
It just, no, there's, a, a lot of time has passed since nineteen sixty-six in state regulations and such. Are we, uh, are we still in compliance with any state regulations?
I don't know if you looked at the ones that they have, all the towns on there, there's a few that are very extensive, I mean, you go through pages and pages. Uh, so, something simplified would be a lot better than.
Right.
Something that's, you know, drawn out.
Agreed. Jeff Crosby, seventeen stack hour itself, uh, one of the, I happen to know a little bit about this. One of the issues that's kinda come up in question is, uh. The subdivisions, several have been put in, you had a name for the subdivision, they put it on a sign. There's only like four in the town, but the newest subdivision that might be coming down the road is the golf course. They proposed a sign thing and they were, they were asking what the signs, the town's requirements were and stuff like that. So that kinda came to light and then, uh, realized that there was some deficiencies, so that's, that's part of the. Thing was, it was kinda.
I know when we're going, where we referenced that sign when we were like approving different things.
Yes.
People on home businesses, that sign thing always got handed to them, so.
Yeah.
If it was sixty-six, I guess it is time to review, I didn't realize it was that old.
Yeah, it's just kinda.
I'd be surprised we had a sign ordinance in sixty-six because we didn't even have zoning until seventy. So.
But it may be just some tweaking of what we have versus.
We may not need to overcomplicate it.
You know, some of the other towns have so much that, I mean, if somebody starts to look at that, they, they'll just say, I don't wanna sign you.
Okay.
Fair enough, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm gonna move on to mailboxes items now. We have a letter that was received, um, at the selectmen's office at the building department. And I think maybe a couple of other offices in town, maybe zoning. In reference to some buildings that were turned. And I think maybe a couple other offices in town, maybe zoning, in reference to some buildings that were turned to apartment buildings. On Twist Hill Road. And, uh, we're gonna have the building department look into that. Uh, they're, they're also asking for some other work on the town from. Some other permits from the town, so it's a good chance to review that. We have an update from Mike Cummings, our building and health inspector for the town. Um, he's working on the Three Homes Road, Mitch Menard property, on a couple of attempts to try and get ahold of that. Owner about some different structures on the property. And he's also working on, uh, two oh nine Twist Hill Road, where he had a garage that had been razed. And it looks like a new breezeway garage installed and I haven't put the proper fire door in there, so. Those are the two updates from Mike that he's working on now currently. We have a, we have a note in here, um, to Lean from Fred Mullin. Um, talking about scheduling the Hopington band for the Memorial Day ceremony. Um, I asked Lean to put this in with our, um, mailbox items. Because we've had other town, the garden club and whatnot, using that. Bandstand out here, and, uh, I wanted to make sure that this board was okay with that, and we looked at the hours of views, just like we were doing with the lighting and all that. So. More this year, we're thinking of having an outdoor ceremony only this year due to COVID nineteen. Uh, we normally run both an outdoor ceremony at eleven AM and an indoor ceremony at one PM with the band. If the town will approve, we thought we would ask. The band, if it would be an option for them to send a smaller number of band members, such as eight to ten people. Instead of the en- entire band to our outdoor ceremony. The smaller number of band members would make an outdoor setup easier as far as numbers and chairs provided, et cetera.
I have no problem with that, yeah.
And this was sent here, uh, it looks like from Chuck Frost, commander of the American Legion post. You have any problem with that?
No, it was, hey, did you reduce the number of the band members down to about eight, you said?
Eight to ten.
Yeah.
And only an outdoor activity?
They're outdoors. And hopefully people just space themselves, so I, I don't see a problem.
They've been reasonable by canceling the indoor ceremony, so just, it's, it's good, they're being, they're being responsible.
And I like that they asked the shows at least two, two different, uh, town entities that are asking.
It's a short period of time too, it's not a full day event, you know?
Okay, uh, the board has consensus, they have no problem, if you want to send a response back to Chuck. We have September and October reconciliations here we need to sign as a board. Lean, is there anything you want to discuss on these?
No, they're going very smoothly, and I've had Eric working by my side to observe and, um. Very positive that in the near future, this will all be managed by his capable hands and. I'll be there to support him and, and done in-house rather than through a. Outside source, but they do also offer, um, hourly, one-on-one problem resolving and support, so.
I think this is on the wrong page, because I found the second signature right here. Want me to move that?
Oh, okay, so I might have looked it, I'm sorry.
I like the word, okay, balanced.
It's all the checks and balances in the formula, so it's nice when it comes out zero, no variance.
This one the same way, yeah. Why are they flagged on different pages?
Oh, because it makes it easy for Pam to find her reports.
Oh, because we have to sign in two spots, right?
Correct, one on the, uh, colored sheet and one on the black and white. Colored sheets are all the checkbooks and the black and white is just a general fund.
There's a thank you card in here from Kyla, uh, to Lean, and that was, uh. Thank you very so much for the opportunity to, uh, work in our office here. We've got, uh, two resignation letters from, uh, people working at the transfer station, one is Ed Woden. And the other one is Keegan Whalen.
Yeah.
And, um, they're going on to full-time positions other places.
And, uh, I'm sad to see them go, but I think at the same time, I'm happy for them, because they're gonna get jobs with benefits.
Yeah. Um, and the last thing we have in here is a notice of decision. Um, this is more of a, a courtesy letter from the planning board. Stating that there is, uh, going to be some new restrictions on the gravel pit, uh, with new retail sales on Ray Road. And there may do, be a new property owner on that.
Yeah, it's probably bad.
And that's it for the mailbox items.
That's dirt doctors, huh?
Yeah. Quite a bit of activity right there now, getting ready for it. Okay, bring it back for public comment?
Yeah, I'd like to thank Jeff for coming in tonight, otherwise this would be another boring event.
How do I look on camera?
Very good.
Does this coat make me look chubby?
Back of the head looks great.
I gave you my best side. I've got a question, well, it's Leo's.
I'm done.
Okay, we've got a pretty much dead asterisk up in the middle of the yard. Significant size tree. Did you want to take it down, or you would like us to hire somebody to take it down? Well, we, we won't take it down in-house, we'll get a vendor to do it. Do you want to hail out, or would you like us to? Would, would you like me to do, would you like me to, I will, got a guy coming around to talk about trees for us, so. I think that tree definitely needs to come. Uh, yeah, it is, the bark has got that shaky look now, and I, I don't think it's gonna have any leaves this year, we've been kind of. You're on the forest committee? Yes. And, uh, maybe we got a couple trees that either. Maybe, we, we keep talking about it every meeting, we have a meeting coming up next month. Jeff, if we do do a couple trees.
Yep.
Do you think it's a possibility to have them, um, install, maybe for, if there's a little warranty, if it's not too crazy price-wise? Like if they install, like if you go up to McMillan up here, one of the commercial vendors, and they install them, do they come with a few-year warranty or? The ones we had planted before accompanied a similar thing that you're talking about, they put them in and they warranty them for a year. I guess at the time that was typical, I don't know, um, actually, we've been talking about this. You've mentioned it several times to me and to the board as well. And, and all that kind of checking around different species, there seems to be a maple that's been cross-bred, cross-pollinated, whatever you want to put it with. Tree and it's supposed to be more, um, like take salt and stuff, more resilient and of stuff like that, so. The reason I ask that is I think we're gonna lose that one that was put in over here. Yeah, it doesn't look very healthy. Um, you know, maybe it comes back and maybe it doesn't, but I was only asking. I, I don't know how long you would get for a guarantee, that was probably about five years ago now. Yeah, because the first year, they almost all make it one year. I don't know if it's the dogs that use the trees or not, when people walk them up there. I would really like to, you know, maybe replace that one and then do one over there. Yeah. If we don't, uh, I think I've been here four years now asking. Yeah, I'll put a bug in the air and tell them you're serious.
Why don't we give them the, you have to give me consensus from the board just to make it happen?
Yeah? Well.
That's what we just installed.
Sometimes they're a little tight with spending their budget.
We just installed five of those fi- um, drought-resistant cross breathe.
Yeah, oh, did you, oh, okay.
From Milligan's.
Yeah.
Milligan's, Milliken's?
Milliken.
What was the guarantee?
I don't know.
Yeah, but you put them in yourself, then you was talking about hiring vendors.
They do offer that service.
Oh, okay. I just know it's a busy time of year for you and putting a tree in, you know, shouldn't go to the. I don't want to put the tree in. Right, so. Yeah, it's better to buy, you gotta buy the tree, you might as well buy it and have it installed. You're gonna have to pay us or pay me with a piece of equipment. Just that, they wrap up the whole. Yeah, exactly. Everything when they.
You're gonna have somebody that knows what they're doing.
No, exactly, I agree with that, no, I mean, it, it's gonna, it involves a cost no matter how you do it, and I think that's a wise. Would you, uh, I mean, when you look up, you know, get somebody to take that tree down, we'll obviously support you on that. But if you want to look into these with Lean, these new trees. Yeah. Um, you know, if you need support from us, if we need to split the cost with the forest guys, I mean. I'll tell them that you, you need some trees replaced and you want to know if we're gonna step up to the plate and do it again. Okay. We'll go from there. How long before you meet again? First Wednesday in, uh, May, next week. Is there a Wednesday next week in May, next week? Seven thirty at the fire station on Wednesday, if you want to stop by. Seven thirty on Wednesday? Seven thirty on Wednesday, I think you have another conflict, because you were gonna come a couple times, something happened. Let me see what we have here.
May fifth, next Wednesday?
Yes. Cinco de Mayo. Well, I guess you can't come. That's my only conflict, no, I'll bring drinks. Don't say that. What time did you say it was? Seven thirty. Seven thirty, wow.
AM.
I can't do that, I'll be in my jammies. It won't be AM. Forest committee meeting, I'll go there.
Well, it's forest committee, okay, yeah, not AM.
Nope. All right, you're on the agenda now. So, uh, all right, that's fine, we'll. All right. Get that going. Yeah. Remove that tree. Whoever you know they use, Bovair, whoever. Well, it depends, who's available and who'll give us the best, best deal. And that's fairly easy, there's not a lot around that tree. Yeah, it's easy for a tree company to take that, I mean, if we cut it in-house, it's the old-fashioned way, drop it across the lawn, and that's just not a good.
Yeah, but fix that.
Yeah, it's just not, that could go badly, it needs to be brought down professionally, can be dealt with. We're on public comment, chief.
Hi.
How you doing? Good to see you guys.
Good to be here.
I think that's it, you ready to go to non-public?
I am. Then I'm gonna make a motion to go non-public for RSA, now you want to back out, but. Subparagraph three, woman number two, paragraph A, at the request of a.